I'd like to call an order to the Calistoga Planning Commission's regular meeting of June 27, 2018. May we have a roll call, please?
Noted for the record that all commissioners are in attendance.
Thank you. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to public comments. Public comments is an opportunity to address the Planning Commission on items of interest to the public that do not appear on the agenda. Comments should be limited to three minutes. The commission may not take action on items raised during the public comments. If we have anyone that would like to make a comment not related to the agenda tonight? Everybody's sitting there peacefully. I guess not. Okay, we'll move on. I would like an adoption of the meeting agenda, and I would like to make a change, if I may. And if you look on your public hearings, I would like to take item three and make it item number one. I would like to take item number two and make it item number three, and make item number one number two. Does that make sense? I went backwards from the bottom up.
Okay, yeah.
That's the way I wrote it down. And the reason that we're doing this is that a couple commissioners have to abstain on voting, and it doesn't make sense for them to sit here, you know, during the entire meeting when they have to be out of the room anyway. So then they would just have to come back in. So we're just rearranging it to accommodate them, okay? So do I have a motion to adopt the agenda where the changes?
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on. Communications and correspondence. Staff?
There were several items that were just given to you. One is a letter regarding item, I guess it's item three now, that I also emailed to you. And then we've also given you a revised resolution for the Solage item, which reflects changes to two of the conditions of approval, and then an explanation from the applicant as to why they requested those changes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from May 23, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Great, moving right along. Okay, so we will go to public hearings, and the first one up will be zoning code amendment Z O A 2018-1, consideration of an amendment to the Calistoga Municipal Code, Section 17.04.085, to delete the requirements for B&amp;B guest rooms to be located within existing structure. Staff?
Thank you. As you recall, at the last Planning Commission meeting, you considered an appeal regarding the director's determination that rooms rented by a B&amp;B may only be located within an existing structure. And this is because that stipulation was included in the definition of B&amp;B inns and facilities. The commission upheld the director's determination, but you did express support for amending the code to allow B&amp;B guest rooms to be located in new structures. I just wanted to briefly give a little bit of background. Upon completion of the Francis House B&amp;B, there will be 17 B&amp;Bs in Calistoga, ranging from one to eight rooms. New construction to accommodate additional or relocated guest units is feasible on some of these properties. And this type of construction would likely require approval of a use permit or design review by the commission, which would provide the opportunity to evaluate the suitability of the new construction on a case-by-case basis. Of course, any proposal to demolish and replace a B&amp;B in its entirety would be subject to Planning Commission review, and they would have to find that special circumstances exist under those conditions. So with that, we are recommending that the proposed zoning ordinance amendment to eliminate the phrase "within an existing structure" from the B&amp;B inns and facilities definition be recommended to the city council, who will ultimately decide on the amendment.
Thank you. Comments of commissioners to staff before I open the public hearing? None?
I had one.
Oh, go ahead.
I just want to say I really appreciate the quick reaction time. It just gives us a lot of confidence that the recommendations that we make can be executed quickly, and that, thanks again for that.
This was an easy one, thank you.
Stroke of the pen. Okay, no one else? Not seen anyone else? I will open it up to the public. If anyone would like to come forward and has anything to say about this, feel free. Wow, quiet group tonight. I can't wait for what's next. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional discussion amongst commissioners? If not, entertain a motion.
I move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending with the city council approval of a zoning code amendment to delete the requirement for a B&amp;B guest rooms to be located within an existing structure.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, moving on. Okay, use permit UP 2018-1, design review DR 2018-1, consideration of use permit and design review, application to allow the expansion and renovation of the Solage Resort at 755 Silver Auto Trail. Staff, you're up again.
Chair, Commission members, Kevin.
I have a question. Your question.
So recuse yourself? Okay, very well. Okay, thank you, Wally. All right.
We'll adjust your $50 accordingly. You're only here for five minutes.
Chair, Commission members, Kevin Thompson, senior planner. This item is a use permit and design review request from the Solage Resort to expand and do some renovation. The Solage team is here tonight. They're not going to give a presentation. They did request to come up and give a few words, and they're, of course, available for questions. Lynn mentioned that there is a revised condition there. This was based on some discussions that the applicant had with Public Works. It's condition 11 and 12, and there's a lot of information there if you're interested in that. The scope of the project, as outlined in your staff report, includes a new entry and courtyard, a new 1,200-square-foot reception building, and 1,800-square-foot administrative and meeting space building, expanded and renovated meeting rooms as well. The pool will be renovated. The kids' pool will be moved. There'll be a kitchen added for food and drink for people, for pool guests, 10 additional guest bedrooms, and 10 additional parking spaces. As mentioned in the staff report, we have found that this project is consistent with the general plan, general plan, land use designation, as well as the two overlay designations, the entry corridor and the area character corridor. The project continues the theme of the low-rise structures with open space, large setbacks as established in the Palisades Resort Spa and Development Plan, which governs the site. This is its own PD. The Palisades Resort Spa Plan Development outlines all the rules and all the regulations for this particular area. Staff, in terms of the environmental review, staff did complete an amendment to the previously adopted EIR for the Palisades Resort and Spa. And our recommendation tonight is that you adopt two resolutions. The first one would be adopting the amendment to the Palisades Resort Spa and EIR. The second would be, second resolution is approving the use permit and design review for the Solage expansion and renovation. That concludes my presentation. You have for questions.
Very good. Any questions of staff? Hearing none, I will open up the public, and anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Just give your name, if you would, please.
Good evening, Chair Coats, members of the commission. My name is Beth Painter, and I'm land use planning representative for the Solage Resort that's before you this evening. You know, I think Kevin's explained the project really quite well. A couple of points that I want to reiterate, well, first of all, who's with us this evening is Greg Flynn, who represents the ownership for Solage, Philip Kendall, who's the GM at Solage, David Aquilina, who's project manager with a pound company who will be managing the construction aspect of this project, and James Jensen, civil engineer with Adobe Engineers. And we're all available to answer questions that you may have. A couple of points that I want to just reiterate on the project itself. The design team is the same design team as the original resort. Back in Gillum is the architect, and Gervin are doing the landscape architecture. If you have any questions, the submittal materials included all of the architecture and design materials. So that, so the consistency and feel of the resort is not going to change. In fact, it's obviously in Solage's best interest to not only ensure that it's consistent, but to make it look and feel like it's been there forever. So it's just timing to make some improvements is really the overall intent of the project. You know, and in fact, when you look at just the construction itself, the resort will remain open during construction, so it needs to be done in a very soft manner to be able to continue that operation. The only point that I'll make before I just take any questions that you might have is that we had, wanted some clarification on a couple of Public Works conditions, and I had been on the phone with Mike Kern today. He's been extremely helpful. We didn't change any of the language of the conditions. I sort of memorialized my conversation with Mike in the letter that's before you, and just put it in the record essentially to just make it clear when we come back in for construction what the intent of that sewer line extension is. We also provided an exhibit which you have that shows, because we didn't really know what portion of the road would need to be extended. So that's for, really for clarification. And, you know, with that, I think I would just be available to answer any questions, and anyone from our team is also here to answer questions.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else out there?
I have.
Okay. You have a question? Okay, we do have a question here.
I was, obviously, I've scanned this as it was just handed to us, but could you just summarize what this is and your conversations with Mike Kern? And I'm assuming that you are in agreement with Public Works, that the two of you are in agreement with how that proceeds?
Yeah, so I'm happy to do that. If you look at the conditions from Public Works, number 11 initially came in to us asking to simply extend the sewer line with a new manhole into Brannon Street without any clarity on that. So both James and myself discussed that with Mike to say, you know, that's really a project that is outside of something that benefits the project. Solage is happy to provide the easements, is happy to take that from a private line to a public line. But what was not clarified in the conditions of approval was that the cost of that would be, would be borne under the capacity fee charges for the project. And Mike made that clear today in my conversations with him. And then the other piece is, and I don't have the history because I wasn't here at the time, but there is a liner at the lift station, the Palisades Lift Station, that has had some problems, and there was a request to assist with that. What we had asked for was, that's fine, but can we establish a specific amount so we understand what the financial obligation is? And that's condition 12.
And you have done that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Any other commissioners, a question for the applicant? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone else care to come up? Feel free. Mr. Williams?
I'm Don Williams, View Road. I guess I'm unenthused about the proposal to expand the resort, and it has really nothing to do with the details of it or with Solage. I have no problem at all with the organization. But I'm thinking of the overall effect on the town. The more rooms that are added, the more traffic is involved, the less small-town feel develops here. There are other projects are lining up as well. As we know, John Merchant's Miranda Project is coming along, and not for lodging probably, but Yellow Rose is out there, the gas station and car wash, not directly related to the Solage project, but altogether, they change the feel of the town as they accumulate. And so, of course, we don't even know the effect yet of the two large resorts that are being built. So there's quite a bit of change coming here in terms of visitors, work on usage of infrastructure, water, and the small-town feel, which is part of that urban design plan, that we see the maintenance of the small town and the small-town spirit is being compromised. We can't stay small if we keep getting bigger. So I would suggest that we just wait on approving rooms, more rooms, more lodging, because the space will be there, and the resorts will be able to do it in time, but we'll have a better idea of what this town is like and what capacity we can carry as far as visitors when these two resorts that have already been approved are online and The Solage project is not big, you know, by standards in town, 10 rooms, not a large, relatively speaking, but a few more rooms here, a few more rooms there. The cumulative effect has a deleterious consequence on the small-town feel, I think. So other resorts, other projects will come along, and they'll be organized like this one is, and they'll fit the criteria that the city establishes, and we'll have another one, and another one. And it's unknown, where do we draw the line? Where do we stop? Where do we say this small town is no longer a small town, and we're not true to our identity when we approve these? So for that reason, I would presently oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask if there's any comments from commissioners? Discussion?
I would just say that the, the expansion, as you've designed it, of course, Becken has done, once again, a wonderful job in terms of maintaining the architectural character that was there. And personally, as well as the project was designed from its inception, I always thought that the entrance and greeting area was a little awkward. And so I look forward that this will actually solve that. And so I'm grateful to see that you're addressing that at this point. Beyond that, I can only say that certainly in my experience, in the 10 years you've been here now, you've been incredibly good neighbors for the, and good citizens in Calistoga, and I think that that should be commended. I support the project.
Commissioner McNair, any comments?
So I echo a similar sentiment that, obviously, there's no concerns with what's presented here. It's well-done, it's well-integrated, the architecture is handled, it fits into the site, there's no concerns from that perspective. I do, I wanted to ask Lynn if she could provide us a little bit of guidance, because my only thought when reviewing this whole application was, do we need 10 more rooms? But also, this may or may not be the venue, because here we are reviewing the, how the project meets the requirements and the planned use agreement, and so I was hoping you could clarify for everyone what we are here to decide, because I don't know that that's it.
You are here to basically decide on the merits of the application before you. We're not ready to present any kind of report on what the saturation point would be for the number of guest rooms in the community. That would be for another day, and I would suggest that you just consider the project before you on its merits.
Commissioner Cooper?
And whether you can make all of the findings as outlined in the resolutions.
Right. All the room additions aside, I can completely understand the reasoning behind the various improvements. The pool bar itself, there's a hub of activity, and it's so concentrated and small, so it's great to see that's going to be expanded, and restrooms expanded, and conference rooms added. So I definitely also appreciate the commitment to improving the property. It's just a crown in Calistoga, and I definitely am for it. So thank you.
Thank you. My comments are, to address Don Williams' comments and understand where he's coming from, I think we have a, I think you've heard that, someone that's proven themselves, they've been a great asset for the community. I guess if it's someone that comes from nowhere, is an unknown, and you don't know what you're going to get, that can be really scary, and it can get out of control, and I don't think anybody in this community wants that. However that being said, I am impressed with the fact that they scattered the units around. You really don't even, other than seeing the construction itself when it's done, I think anybody's probably even visited your establishment, you know, a few years ago and then comes back would probably even know it when it's completed. So I appreciate that, and so I, but I did want to address Mr. Williams' comments, because there is some validity in some of the things he is saying. But that being said, I think you did a wonderful job. You've proved yourself, you're a strong supporter of the community, and you need to take that in overall when you look at a project, at what people do for the community, not just because they're making money. So I appreciate that. That being said, we need two motions to vote on. Does anyone want to take the first one?
Okay. We'll take it.
Okay. Yes, oh, back, I got it, back up, I got it. I have to close the public hearing. Anyone else want to come up and make a comment? I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself here. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and I will move on to a motion.
Okay. First motion is, I would like to move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving an addendum to the Plan Palisades Resort and Spa EIR.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The second one. How about you, Commissioner McNair? Would you like to do that one?
I move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving use permit 2018-11 and design review 2018-1 with conditions as modified as with the paperwork presented today.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Well, good luck. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to number three under public hearings. We'll just take a moment till people get out of the room here. Okay, number three, use permit UP 2018-5, consideration of a use permit application to allow the establishment of a Next Home Realty at 1437 Lincoln Avenue.
I believe I'll have to recuse myself on this one, so am I?
Because of proximity.
Due to the proximity of your office. Okay, thank you, Scott.
Hi, Rhonda.
You're up, staff.
Okay, thank you. The applicant desires to establish a realty office in 560 square feet of the building that was formerly occupied by Miguel's Restaurant at 1437 Lincoln Avenue. When the applicant first approached Planning Department staff several months ago, we advised her that offices are allowed uses in the downtown, and mentioned we were excited that she would be occupying a portion of a long vacant building. When she shared with us that her business would be a franchise of Next Home, a nationwide real estate company, we advised her that the city discouraged formula businesses, but that it was possible to seek approval for one through a use permit application. Staff believes that one of the community's primary concerns regarding formula businesses is maintaining a unique appearance to Calistoga's downtown. We offered the opinion to the applicant that if she was willing to forego any Next Home signage or logos on the building frontage, this unique appearance could be maintained. The applicant agreed, and staff approved her business license. A building permit was issued to the applicant in April to allow improvements to the building to house her office. When the city manager became aware of the business's name on the license, that is Next Home in the Valley, he expressed the opinion that it is, in fact, a formula business, regardless of the absence of signage. He advised the applicant in May that she would have to apply for a use permit if she wished to maintain a franchise arrangement with Next Home. The applicant was dismayed by this news, but eventually decided to apply for the use permit, and her application includes the installation of Next Home-related signage and logos. Staff believes that the proposed business qualifies for an allowed exception to the general plan's formula business policy, because it would meet local residents' needs, which is a required finding for a formula business use permit. The proposed business is also consistent with the required finding that it be independently owned and operated. It would have a minimum, minimal physical appearance on Lincoln Avenue by occupying only 15 feet of frontage at a mid-block location, and by employing signage that would not exceed 32 square feet. It would therefore, in our opinion, not adversely affect the overall unique character of the downtown because of its minimal presence. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the use permit, subject to recommended conditions of approval, which include a prohibition against posting flyers or video displays in the business's windows. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions, staff, this time? No? Okay. This is a public hearing, and I will open it. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Sandy Tucker. I am the applicant. I just wanted to let you know a little bit about myself, and I appreciate all the information that's been shared about maintaining the history of the town, because that's very important to me as well. I did grow up here, graduated from high school here in 1983, and the building in particular is important to me, because my partner, his family has owned it for years, and we both worked there in high school, and it's just kind of nice to be bringing that building back to life. If you're aware, there is a mural through the building of the, of the community, the valley, back at the time, main points of it. We are going to great lengths to have that restored and maintained, because the history and maintaining the town's character are really important to us as well. I don't know what else to really say to you guys. I just wanted to introduce myself, and thank you so much.
Thank you. You have a question?
Yeah, I have.
Sandy, you have a question here?
A couple of questions. I want to be clear on some of the things in terms of your business. You currently have a business in Lake County?
Actually, the business I own is in Calistoga. It doesn't have a physical address at this point, but I am licensed through the state of California with a Calistoga address. So it's a virtual business at this time, and I'd like to give it a street front.
Okay. And in your association with Next Home, you are a licensed real estate agent, and you are a licensed broker?
I actually have a broker of record that is with another company within Next Home, but she will remain my broker of record until I have my own license. I just wanted to put that off until I was settled in one place. But I do have a broker of record who actually is in, also owns a different Next Home business.
So you, so in effect, you are relying on Next Home to be able to consummate sales?
Not necessarily, because I actually have a local broker here in Calistoga that would like to be my broker of record, and I've just sort of put that on hold. She's somebody who's lived here for a while, and if that were necessary, she would come on board as well.
I just, to me, it seems important, because it's, under state law, you have to work under the supervision of a broker.
Correct.
And, and as we sort of consider the whole aspect of what you're proposing and your relationship with what is clearly a national formula business, it makes a bit of a conundrum.
Actually, the way that it works, everything in our business is virtual, and it's no different than if she lives in the next room with me. We work on transaction rooms, so every single document that we work on is online, available, and as my broker, she has access to it. So she, that is how she would, all she really has to do is review files before they're closed.
Yes, as, as someone who worked for a formula business.
Okay, but that, I mean, just as a broker. For any broker that we worked, that I worked under, would be doing the same exact thing. That's not a Next Home thing, that's a California.
As far as I understand, the other Realtors in town all have in-house brokers. And so it's, they are, they certainly fulfill the local, the local business component. Calistoga Realtor is, you know, a broker, Bob Beck is a broker, on and on.
And that is your intention as well?
My intention is to get my broker's license as soon as I get through this storm. I would like to then focus on that. I've been focusing my energy on getting the business going and doing all of that, and then I will be getting my own. And if it is a concern, I can have a local broker in my office, if that's something that's of concern to you. I've worked in all the other offices that I've worked in that were not franchises. They were, the broker was in a different They were, the broker was in a different office anyway, so it didn't matter. Once you have more than one office, we had two offices, and our broker was in the other office and you never knew the difference. So...
And are you contractually obligated with Next Home?
Yes.
That's all my questions.
Okay.
Any other questions of the applicant at the top this time? Okay, this is a public hearing. If anyone else would like to come up, that would be great. No one? Seeing no one? No one's coming up? Okay. Then I'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much. Comment, any comments from Commissioners at this point? If not, any discussions?
Do you want to?
Go ahead.
I, I'm not particularly concerned about, it does sound like her intention is to become a broker for her own business, or it sounds like she has the option to work with a local, local broker, which I understand the preference for since we're trying to be local-serving. But other than that, I'm not particularly concerned. I understand that, that we don't encourage formula businesses that are restaurants or other types of visitor accommodations, but that we do have chains that in the form of gas stations and, and other local-serving businesses that we rely on in town. So, I'm not particularly bothered by that.
Commissioner Wells?
Yeah, I have, I do have concerns and, and, and I will certainly say in, in respect to this, observations that, that the, there are a number of national formula businesses that are in Calistoga and they, but they all pre-exist the ordinance that was written in 1996. They were already here and they've been here, well, I've been here 30 years and it seemed like they'd been here forever. And interestingly enough, with the ordinance that was written in 1996, this is actually the very first time we faced this question. And it is, I think, to many people in town, an existential question, which I can't believe I would be saying when we're talking about a 15-foot-wide storefront on Lincoln Avenue.
That I understand.
Which is, you know, which just seems like a no-brainer. But, but I believe that it is. And, and in the ordinance, when it was written, in the last portion of the ordinance, certainly there was a provision made for, for businesses that, that were local-serving. And, and that makes a lot of sense and it sounds well and good. But the ordinance and the council gave us no direction as what constitutes local-serving. There was no definition of that. And certainly, a real estate office is local-serving. It serves people in the community. So does a Starbucks. And, and I sometimes even wonder about that differential because I certainly have an awful lot of very, almost adjacent neighbors in, to my home on Cedar Street and who own their homes. But they live in San Francisco, one family lives in New Hampshire, one family lives in Canada. So, so the home is in Calistoga, but, but, but the owners are not in Calistoga. So, it is not something that I think is, is just inherently completely local-serving. I also believe that with the requirement of the use permit, in the intention of the ordinance, it was really meant to address the kinds of businesses that cannot be served in Calistoga unless there is a larger or national affiliation. And when the ordinance was written, the example was given of a bank. We all bank. We have to bank. But there, you can't form a bank to serve only 5,500 people and have it as an independent bank. It just would never function. And so that would be an example of something that can't function unless there is that relationship or association. Interestingly enough, another example was in fact gasoline stations because all, even though there are independent gasoline stations, the, generally, an independent gasoline station does not have access to the, to the quality of the gas that you buy at a national company. And, and there are a lot of certainly car experts who will tell you that never put that kind of gas in your car. So, interestingly enough, even that is, is related. The, the last thing that, that strikes me is that if, if asked through the use permit of whether, whether the business is local-serving and, and, and we need that, and, and it needs an association with some, you know, formula business, which we call it, it is clear that in terms of a real estate business, it's not a requirement. Calistoga Realtor has been here forever. They don't have that association. You know, Bob Beck has been here forever. It doesn't require that association. And, and there are, the RE/MAX is here. They were here before 1996. And so, and it begs the question though then, not whether or not another Realtor can be supported because, because the Planning Commission is not here to pick winners and losers. That would be completely your choice. But, but it, whether the association with the formula business is the, is the only way that that need can be addressed. And I think it's clear that, that that is not the case. The, the last point I'll make is that I, and you, you grew up here in Calistoga and you, you, I think, know that, that the concept of the formula business ordinance is both very precious to the people who live here and also at the same time, a very fragile ordinance. And I think if you ask most people who live in the Valley, they will say that the things they treasure most are probably, number one, the ag preserve and the existence of that. And probably followed right behind that is the, is the no-formula-business ordinance. And, and the fragility of the ordinance to me is one that I think staff understands very well my position. I think the city council understands my position. And the city manager understands my position. And that is, is that a rule unenforced is unenforceable. And that has been proven in law time and time again. And I honestly do not want to be the one who cast the vote that broke the dam on, on our formula-business ordinance. So, sadly, I have to say that I cannot support this.
Okay.
I completely understand that perspective on this and I think I'm a little bit surprised that, because I understand where you're going with this, given everything else that's coming after it. All of those other things that are coming down the pipeline and, and how we're, we are on the edge, I think is what you said. But also, where, where are all the public comments? It doesn't appear that anyone else is coming out to express their concerns. And I'm, I'm really surprised by that.
So, I can sum up. So, under land-use element policy, it, it clears states, formula businesses within the city shall generally be prohibited. That, you know, we call it formula businesses, franchises, they're the same thing. Exceptions may, that's a big word here, may be made. They're not mandatory. There's a case-by-case basis. And they have to meet a, I think, a very high level. I think Commissioner Wilks kind of tried to explain that for the local residents. I am not a newcomer here at all. I've been here well over 40 years and all my children were born and raised here. So, I appreciate this community as much as anybody can possibly appreciate it. So, I have great concerns. I truly do. I, I happen to know Sandy's brother and he's an awesome guy and I, and I'm sure that you're just as awesome. But that being said, I, I just can't get myself to see that this raises itself up to that level, that for primarily serving the residents here. I have this information off the line from, from Next Home. It's impressive, I'll say that. There's a lot of horsepower there and I can see why it's attractive to, to people coming to this community and using that. That being said, it doesn't fit well as a small town when you come from that direction with it. I, I, I don't know. It just doesn't fit well. And I think maybe that's, when this was crafted, the word "primary" was designed to raise that bar that high. And I just don't think that this meets that, that level. And that's the kind of finding I think I'm going to make. That being said, we need to take a vote. And I'm not quite sure how to approach that vote. I don't know if the motion-
Well, I have a quick question first.
Yes, absolutely.
Would, would either of you feel differently if she was a broker and she wasn't relying on an outside source for that, for that input into the business?
If the association is still as the next, is, as an agent of Next Home?
Right.
No.
Okay. I just wasn't sure if that was a factor in your consideration.
That is, I think that's a primary factor. You, you, I'll open up the public hearing. You're welcome to, go ahead, come forward, please.
Thank you very much. Tina Wallace, I'm a land use attorney representing Cola Homes. I'm Ms. Tucker. And I really appreciate the seriousness with which the commission takes this decision. I would take it back to your ordinance and your ordinance has five criteria. Your general plan specifically recognizes and allows formula businesses. And the focus really needs to be on the five criteria set forth in your ordinance to consider this use permit. That is, the application consistent with the general plan. Again, your general plan specifically recognizes the existence and possibility of formula businesses. Then the second criteria is that the formula, I'm sorry, this is on wheels and it moves. That's a little exciting, is whether or not the zoning ordinance allows the use. And your zoning ordinance clearly allows a formula business with the use. The third criteria is will the formula business impair or interfere with the development, use, or enjoyment of other property? No one has said anything today that allowing this formula business, a real estate office that does serve local people, I mean, even in the law, one of the most fundamental concepts, concepts in the law is that land is unique. The purchase or sale of real property is one of the few areas in the law where you can get what's called an affirmative court order, ordering a transaction to go through or a contract to be upheld because land is uniquely local. The regulation of land under the California Constitution is also uniquely local. So, you're talking about a business that is by any measure uniquely local, dealing with a uniquely local commodity. And again, there's been no evidence, no testimony, no statement, no anything to show that the commission can't meet this third prong, which is the absence of impairing or interfering with the development, use, or enjoyment of other property in the town. The fourth criteria, there's been quite a bit of discussion about, as I said in my letter that's attached to the staff report, Ms. Tucker will own this business. So, it is going to be independently owned and locally owned. And the fifth criteria is, does the use serve the residents? And given the many legal concepts saying that land is inherently local, and I certainly appreciate that people do come from out of town, especially to beautiful communities like Calistoga to purchase land, nevertheless, it is local. Very briefly, Commissioner Wilks, I have had either the pleasure or misfortune, depending on your, anyone's perspective, of reviewing the 1996 and 1999 staff reports prepared by then interim director, he went by J. T. Wick back then. And I respectfully disagree. I think that your, I did not see anything in that history or those ordinances, meaning that the business had to be, quote, standalone or exist without any support. I did go to law school in Vermont and there were really tiny banks that serve small populations. But I have to respectfully disagree and think that you're adding a requirement to the ordinance that doesn't exist. And I would just ask you to take that into consideration. And finally, by way of a compromise, I think that you have an applicant who is trying to be prudent in developing the business. She's offered to have a local broker and you could certainly attach a condition of approval to this use permit, giving her an appropriate ramp time to get the business established and underway, but then requiring a local broker within a set period of time, six or 12 months. I'll answer any questions that you may have. And I do thank you for the very serious consideration that you're giving this issue.
Great. Thank you very much. That being said, I will close the public hearing. Would you like to respond? Any comments that have been made? Commissioner Wilks?
I, I can only say, I am not an attorney. And so, you certainly have me on that one. And the, it, the thing that I am not willing though to do is, I cannot say for certain that, that this would not be the incident that would cause a legal challenge to the entire concept of, of the formula business because it is, it is a fragile ordinance. And, and so, I may be saying I'm willing to punt it to the city council, but I'm sorry, that's what I'm going to do.
My response is, and I'm not disagreeing with the attorney, that they meet the criteria. But if you go back up, it says, this is, this is a case-by-case basis. This is, is really kind of discretionary at this point, the way I view it. It's, it is allowable if, if, if it's so deemed to be something that I think the, the commission screens and it's, it's something we need in the community as a formula business. And I don't think, there again, and I'll stand by on what I said earlier, I don't think it rises to that occasion. And I think that's why it's case-by-case and I, and it, and that's why it may or may not be approved. So, that being said, I, I really don't have any other comments to make. Commissioner McNair, do you have anything else you would like to say?
No, I don't think at this point. I, I understand she's a local individual trying to run a local business. Your points are well heard that this business could operate if it weren't a franchise and then we wouldn't be here and we wouldn't be having this discussion and we wouldn't be approaching the tipping point of potentially inviting all sorts of other things into town that would get locals enraged. I'm flabbergasted that the locals aren't concerned at this point. They don't see it the way you see it. And so, for this case, I'm, I'm not as uncomfortable with it as the two of you are.
Okay. So, I guess the next step would be if, to put up, if there's a motion to be on the floor and it would require a second. So, does anyone want, here, wanting any Commissioners to make a motion to approve this?
Sounds like if I make this motion, I'm not going to get a second. Or do we do it anyways for the formality of, of things?
You need to, you need to move forward if you want to make a motion.
Okay. So, I'll go ahead and move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving use permit UP 2018-5.
Do we have a second? Seeing no second, it dies for lack of. Staff? Do we have something that we can use for a motion?
No, I believe you should just go ahead and if you wanted, offer a second motion to deny the permit.
Okay, I will open it up for a second motion to deny.
Okay. I, I will move that the Planning Commission deny the resolution approval of use permit UP 2018-5.
Do we have a second? And I will second that. Will you please poll the Commissioners, please?
Commissioner McNair?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wilks?
Yes.
Chair Coats?
Aye.
Thank you. The applicants advise that there's a 10-day appeal period to the city council.
Yes. Thank you very much. Moving on to matters initiated by Commissioners. Do the Commissioners have anything exciting?
Well, no, I don't have anything exciting, but back to our discussion earlier. Well, no, I don't have anything exciting, but back to our discussion earlier about the Solage project, which I really do think was the right move to make tonight, I am anticipating that there are people in the community that are looking for that tipping point or that sort of status report on the need for additional rooms in Calistoga, and I think that it would be timely to start heading down that path.
Okay, and we can, we can visit that at a later date? Okay, thank you very much.
Secondly, and I, Lynn and I have talked about this, but I would like to pursue with staff a revision to the formula business ordinance to try to get a little more clarity into how we define some of these things, and perhaps to introduce the idea of, of making the introduction of a formula business more evidence-based.
That would be very timely.
I think a lot of our, we're running into this on a regular basis, that our, a lot of our codes and ordinances are actually antiquated almost, they're so old, and we probably need to look a little closer at some of them, and maybe not have to be confronted with this kind of decision-making if we can address them sooner, so. And I would appreciate staff if they see anything like that coming down the road to bring it up.
With your crystal ball.
Yeah, with your crystal ball, thank you very much. Okay, that being said, is that all we have from matters from Commissioners? Directors' report?
I guess I'm happy to report we are going to have a meeting July 11th. We actually have four matters for you. Uh-oh.
July 11th.
July 11th.
I was thinking August 11th, I apologize.
I said July 11th.
That was scary. No, July 11th, you're correct.
He was looking at me like, I'm not going to be here.
I'll be here.
Yes, we have four matters for you, and then we, it looks like July 25th we'll have a couple matters too, so we're ramping up and very busy right now. Lots of things we've been working on for a long time are finally coming to a head. Solage, for example, we've been working on, well, before Kevin.
It's Kevin's fault.
Now we have the person power to actually get things done, so.
And you guys do a great job, by the way, you do. You know, when I'm in another office so often and watching what you folks do, it's nonstop, so I think the people in this community need to appreciate that.
Thank you.
Whether you approve of their decision-making policies is irrelevant, you do your work, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
I guess if that's it, I will adjourn to July 11th, 2018. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second that, we are adjourned.